I call the Monday, June 26th Select Board Meeting to order. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, dial 408-650-3123 with access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. We need to move into executive session, executive session for a discussion on collective bargaining. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We go into executive session. Do we need all of the wherefore's and what views? I'll just do it. In accordance with Mass General Law 30A, Section 21A, 3, to deliberate upon matters which have done in an open meeting detrimentally affect the position of the town regarding strategy with respect to collective bargaining, to come out of executive section and reconvene in an open meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call vote, sorry. Mr. Carrin?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Detrimental effects on the negotiating position of the public body relative to strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and the board will come out of executive session and reconvene in open session. We are reconvening the June 26th Select Board Meeting. Just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Public Television, and we seem to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we don't have anybody signed up for public comment. No public hearings, our public hearings. We have an automotive repair license. Is the applicant here? All right, did you want to come up? We would need a motion to open the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair is a yes. All right, did you want to tell us about your...
My name is Joshua Fuller of Fuller Automotive Companies here in Auburn. Currently, we operate some companies up on Route 20. Had some history back on Auburn Street. Currently, we are looking to open up and gain a repair license for a company called Automotive Diagnostic Solutions, which specializes in the recalibration and calibration of advanced driver assistance systems on today's vehicles. What that means is a lot of the technology that you find on your current vehicles, such as blind spot monitors, front radar, windshield camera, adaptive cruise control. Now that all this technology is embedded in the vehicles to help keep drivers safe, anytime that there is a collision or anytime that there is a replacement part, such as a windshield replacement, that manufacturer mandates that that vehicle has to be recalibrated. It's a very big safety concern, safety issue that we're facing in our industry, and this is where we will be looking to... It's a small bay garage, and it's, we refer to it as a laboratory because it has to have a flat floor, white paint, and really nothing on the walls. There's no lifts. There's very little any type of mechanical repair. A lot of it is computerized diagnostics, as well as lasers and targets to be set up. And then we're also looking to, a lot of times we go out to separate repair facilities and perform a lot of the initializations and recalibrations at those facilities as well.
Do any board members have questions?
Will vehicles from your other locations be driven there for repair? Or is there...
Yeah, what we refer to as hot shots, they'd be driven there. If they can't be done at our existing location, be driven there and be driven back. So there are vehicles that will not be, I would say probably the average lifespan of a vehicle would be a couple hours.
I believe it has gone through the DCG.
Yes. Prior to the purchase of the property, we saw a lot of due diligence from the town in Caleb specifically on the property and voiced what we were expecting to do. Into 2008, the building was added on to, so it got a permit for multi-use. And then at that time, it was, we were told actually by the town that DCG was not going to be necessary for a repair license, but we wanted to do it anyways to express our really good due diligence. And so we've since gone through DCG, and any concerns have been, or are in the process of being taken care of with the town.
Are there any other questions?
So, Mr. Fuller, these vehicles won't have any leaking, anything like that, as they're going between locations, correct?
That is correct.
And anything like that?
That is correct, Mr. Carpenter. These vehicles at the final stages of the repair process. There are no fluid transfers. Hoods aren't even being opened most of the time. A lot of it is just kind of plug and play and setting up targets and lasers.
So this is an existing building, and you're just doing modifications to it. But you're not encouraging customers to come down there? There's no kind of...
Yeah, we're really not even doing any type of modifications to the building. Therefore, we, there was no necessary for site plan approval. There's no exterior changes, interior changes. Probably two or three. Probably two technicians and maybe a runner.
Are there any other questions? Okay, we would need a motion to close the hearing. Oh, are there any butters? Certainly. Do you have any questions? Did you want to come up? Could you just speak into the microphone? I'm having a hard time hearing you, I'm sorry.
The previous owner had to put signs up and get the police involved because the traffic coming down Jerome as well as going up, well, because they don't want to get stuck trying to get out onto Southbridge Street, they'll just cut right through this property. We have 18 wheelers. I was talking to a neighbor about a few weeks ago, and the 18-wheeler came flying down Jerome and took out half a tree. And we just stood there as leaves were raining down on us. I did call the DPW a few years back because the signs disappeared, and they put the sign up again at the bottom of Jerome, but they never put it up at the top of Jerome. So these trucks, what they're doing is, they don't want to go around the long way. They're coming up over the hill from 146, Pola, Atlas, the whole bunch of them. They don't want to do it. And they come down Jerome or up Jerome. I had a woman stop me in Coles one day and burn my ear off for a year because the trailer trucks came through there and ripped her wires right off the side of her house, twice. We have to keep these trailer trucks. We have to do something and keep control, do something with these trailer trucks. Nobody ever wants to address it. I'm always the one up here complaining about it, and nobody ever wants to address it. Something serious is going to happen, and you're going to find that you're going to be dealing with a lot of not just trailer trucks but cars because they don't want to wait, and they'll just use that property as a cut through. And when the previous owner built that other big garage that's there, that was supposed to be for his business to house his equipment. And as soon as it was done, he put that TRP business in there. I don't even know if they have the proper permits for operating that business in there. But he's got a FedEx 18-wheeler that comes down there almost daily, and he doesn't care. He just comes whipping right down that hill and will go right into that parking lot. And then when he tries to get out, because they can't turn around because they're so big, they'll back right up and go right into the property across the street. So we really need to stop paying attention to these issues with these trailer trucks around here. I've been saying it for years, but falls on deaf ears. And as long as you're not going to bring any more trailer trucks, I don't have a problem.
Let me have some discussions with our DPW director and maybe someone from the police department to see if we can take a look into the matter.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your comments. We would need a motion to close the hearing. Are there any other butters that would like to make comments? Seeing none?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to be closed the public hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The chair is a yes.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion if it's in order to approve the license provided with all applicable requirements of the state and town, any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled, said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Fair to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed upon the license.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes. Oh, Steve seconded, didn't he?
They didn't hear it.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, we're all set. Thank you so much. Next, we don't have any communications in the Select Board General item. We have an application by Common Ground Cider Works for a one-day beer and license at the Independence Day celebration.
Madam Chair, I want to inform the board that this application has been withdrawn.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, can we move up Town Manager Item 8A, request to allocate additional arcophones for the Warren Road Pump Station?
Absolutely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The chair is a yes. So I will turn it over to you, Mr. Kuznovich.
Thank you. Before we get into this request, I just want to give the board an update on where we are relative to the total funds allocated to the town. I provided the board with a report. I can tell you that the town has received $5,011,472. It has expended out of that amount to date $1,110,622. It has encumbered or committed for various projects $465,132. The board voted and obligated an additional amount, not encumbered to date, $1,515,075, leaving an unobligated balance of $1,920,643. There is a request before you tonight that would take $350,000 out of that $1.9 million. We do have a engineering study on our HVAC systems that we're currently awaiting a report on. We reached out to the engineering firm today, but we were unsuccessful. Is that correct? Haven't heard back. It was my understanding that that report was due to the town sometime late April. We haven't seen that yet. So we know that has a value. We don't know what that value is, but I want the board to keep that in mind and consideration for any future requests from ARPA. It's also been rumored that the federal government may clawback any unused portion of ARPA funds that we are very concerned about. Certainly, I believe there's a clawback on the federal earmarks, not at the local level yet, but it's rumored that it may trickle down to the local level. So I just want the board to be aware of that and in their consideration for any requests that may come to you in the near future. And with that, I'll turn it over to Nick to explain his additional request as a result of some bids that came in recently last week.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Nick Schwartz. I'm the Assistant DPW Director and Sewer Superintendent, and I'm here to request that the Select Board consider voting in support of allocating an additional $350,000 in ARPA funds for the replacement of the Warren Road Pump Station replacement project. This project I presented to the board back in August of last year and described the need to replace this pump station, and the board voted to approve $1 million for this project based off of my cost estimate that was done at that time that would include the design, construction, and construction phase engineering for this project. We did receive bids on the 14th of June, and they came in a little bit higher than expected. So there's a cost breakdown in the memo that I provide as the board and an explanation of where sort of all this comes from. But essentially, the low bid for this project that we've already spoken to our consulting engineer firm who's helping us go through the bid process, they vetted the firm, and they don't have a problem with recommending the award. So it's just over $950,000 for the construction alone. In addition to that, we've already spent 85, just over $85,000 on the design and bidding phase engineering, and we would need to spend another $121,000 just over that for the construction phase engineering, which would include construction administration and construction observation oversight from the consulting engineer. In addition to that, I've included a contingency line item of 20% of the construction of the bid. That's to cover any potential changes or change orders that might be needed during... And I guess at this point, I would open it up to any questions that the board has as to this request.
Lean forward and talk into the mics, if I may, Madam Chair.
Absolutely.
So you have identified 350, and you've mentioned that if we don't approve the 350 from ARPA, it's going to have to come from Sewer Enterprise. So can you just briefly explain how that would impact other plans within Sewer, and that's why you chose this option to take the 350 addition line of ours?
Yes, absolutely. So we would be, if the board chose not to approve this, you know, we would have to look at our capital improvement budget in order to fund this project, in order to award it to the contractor without having to go through a whole new bid. So that would pretty much drain all the funds we have currently in our sewer line repair line items. In addition to this project, we do have several other projects that are in the works at various stages of planning or design that are sort of required for the proper operation and maintenance of our sewer system. In addition to this project, we had a sewer system evaluation study last year. We've identified two different projects, well, really two dozen different projects from that. One of them being a very large project that we're working on, getting into the design phase on, and another series of much smaller tasks that I'd be looking to get done over the next year or so as well. In addition to that, we have a couple other projects on the near term that we're looking to get done. And basically, if we were to have to take this out of our capital improvement budget, we would have to push those off by a year or more. My biggest concern with that is the fact that there doesn't appear to be a break in the rising prices, so any project that we do next year will be more than if we were to do it this year, and so on. So I would recommend not deferring things if we can't. But even the price aside, asset management is something that we need to be doing a bigger focus on. Our sewer system is 50 years old. It's only getting older, and there hasn't been significant asset management or capital projects done on it, which is, it's very typical of communities with sewer systems of our age. Didn't need work for the first several years, but things are going to start happening much more quickly, and we need to get ahead of that. So deferring the maintenance on our system would be ill-advised. Or alternatively, we could borrow money or do some other thing, but then the ratepayers would have to bear that cost through the financing charges. So trying to avoid all of that.
Does anybody else have questions?
Probably have more questions, but they're probably better answered by Town Manager. I know that during the ARPA process, the town opened up for public discussion. The board did seeking public input on ways to spend the ARPA funding. Have we pursued any of those types of initiatives? What is potentially in the queue for the $1.9 million besides this 350 add-on? I know, you know, I know, including myself, requested money towards, dedicated towards sidewalk construction, recreational programs, food pantry programs, which I know we've done, and I know there was a whole host of other requests. And I'd just like to know that, you know, what has the town done towards those requests or towards dedicating some of the money towards that?
So we did have an open and public process, and I think we heard some of the needs that were brought to the board's attention. I think we tried to address those through some of the obligations that have already been committed, especially in the area of AYFS and the food pantry and things of that nature. But the remaining balance, we know that we have some emergent needs as it relates to HVAC. I think one of the messages we received from the board is it would be nice if we could use the ARPA money in a way that we would save the taxpayers' money by not expending it out of our capital program that we're going to pay debt and interest on and may incur some additional expense. Those are the kind of areas that we were able to give back to the residents of our community by not raising a level of taxation through debt and interest payments. So we put a focus on our five-year capital plan. What can we purchase instead of using ARPA funds instead of tax levy money? There's not much left. I mean, if you vote 350 out, I think an early estimate that I saw relative to our HVAC needs was in the vicinity of 1.2 to 1.5. That maybe, that amount could be much greater than an early estimate that we were given, given the rising costs of equipment and supplies and labor. So we're basically, I would advise the board that we remain in a holding pattern until that number comes in. If that number is significant and we're not able to do some of the things we want to do, I think then we can consider some other needs throughout the town in lieu of the HVAC work.
Okay, so let me ask this a different way, and I'm going to sound like a broken record, and Steve's heard this before from the planning board, time on the planning board. We've adopted a complete treats program. We've supposedly committed to making our community more walkable, more bikeable. There's been no dedicated money in our budget geared towards sidewalks. I know we've had this conversation on potentially looking at free cash. If we're not going to be using ARPA money, what money would we be using to build out a sidewalk network that makes people be able to walk to Jury Square like we envisioned in our long-term planning? Because it doesn't seem to be any money put behind that.
So I have some ideas for that, that I began some discussions with our DPW director that I wanted to bring a plan into the board that addresses that. It would annually earmark a sum of money that's currently going into our capital program. We've reached a level now, we earmark 1/10 of our annual tax levy, add a prop 2 and 1/2 towards our capital program. We are funding our capital about $1.7 million yet. I believe that's adequate. We had a benchmark of two. I'd like to transition that into a street safety pedestrian sidewalk program. We're also retiring some debt from the Auburn High School that may offer a one-time infusion of tax levy money as a startup for this initiative. So that's something I want to have some discussions with, not only with the board, but with DPW, and bring a plan to the board.
Madam Chair, I think as a goal setter, I think this is something that the board would like to see some of these things go into effect. It would make sense that the board would have that kind of conversation and try and figure out how it can be pulled.
Certainly, this would be a long-term plan, just like we did with the capital. When we started that, we had zero tax levy revenue going into the capital. We're now at 1.7. I think we can do something very similar to a sidewalk program if we are creative.
Are there any additional questions?
Life expectancy? I know you said our system's about 50 years old as other things have happened. Do we expect 50 years on the next iteration in what we're doing with the pump station? Or are we expecting a 20-year lifespan? And is that something that's being worked into on that long-term planning?
Sure. And do you mean for the specific pump station or sort of the system in general?
This specific pump station. But again, if you say generally, you're looking at a long-term plan and trying to fund that through typical life expectancy, I believe you're...
Right. So, and I think we would benefit from like a larger scale asset management plan to kind of plan out every single, you know, sort of piece of pipe. But at the same time, the conditions around different pipes, different pump stations sort of dictate how long they last. A ductile iron pipe in one part of town might last 100 years, and it might last 20 years in another part of town, depending on soil conditions and depending on pressures and all sorts of things. So it's hard to say with certainty. But the expected life expectancy, life expectancy of a pump station would probably be on the order of about 50 years or so. And we designed this project with that in mind and also being mindful of in 50 years, although I don't expect that any of us will be here, how would they then go about replacing this at that time? So we don't want to make it impossible for them to do that. But, but yes, I would expect it to be at least a 50-year lifespan. And when you say the life expectancy, the structures on site may be able to be reused once again, and it's just a matter of replacing controls or pumps. I mean, the control equipment for these pumps to probably have a 20-year lifespan. The piping may have 30-year lifespan, the pumps themselves probably 20 or 30 years. But what we're doing right now, I mean, we're not replacing all of the underground concrete structures. Those are 50 years old, and I plan on, we're going to rehabilitate those and reuse them for the existing station so that we can avoid expensive excavations. And I would expect that they, they didn't show any signs of degradation or anything. I would expect that they would continue to last.
Question? Oh, thank you. Through the chair, what proportion of our residents have sewer? What proportion of the town is sewered?
Percentage of residents?
Or, you know, or of the town, or...
I've been asked that before. Is it about 80? Yeah, I want to say it's about 80.
80%, thank you.
Mr. Carpenter?
So I've been hearing a lot about the water problems with residents. This may sound like a silly question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Do the pipes that we are putting into the ground, because the residents experience considerable wear and replacement, is that something that is experienced at the sewer department level? Or is the type of pipe that you put in place of a different type, I guess?
So it's a little different, and obviously, you know, we don't, if there's an issue coming from the pipe, it's not as obvious, you know, it's going through a pump and going up to the treatment plant. So we get grit, but that's coming from other sources. It's hard to say. I will say that the intent for this project is to replace the existing ductile iron pipe with a HTPE, plastic type of pipe, that is much more resistant to hydrogen sulfide degradation for wastewater. So the intent is to use a pipe that will last longer for this, for this application. But we do have ductile iron pipe that we use for sewer in town, for a larger diameter pipe. Yeah, it doesn't affect the quality of the wastewater necessarily. There are newer methods that we use, different linings that didn't used to get used. But yeah, I think that the water department has different, you know, different challenges than we do.
Noticing through your career, you've been in different places. If you're noticing that you're replacing pipes more frequently or you're seeing a certain kind of wear due to what is passing through the, what is in the wastewater?
Not necessarily in our pipes. We don't... We don't see a lot of that. You know, we do see bigger impacts at our pump station themselves. People flushing things they're not supposed to, flushing vape pens and things that you wouldn't expect to even make it down a toilet. So there's some outreach that we've talked about doing to kind of educate the public on that kind of thing. But as far as the pipes themselves, I don't think we've seen a significant issue that. We do have some... One force main that we're looking at, that we're still trying to evaluate what the issues that we're having on that are. They could be related to sort of sewer gases, but they might not be, so that's still something. But yeah, no, it's... Yeah, those types of things we're not really seeing in the pipes.
Does anyone have additional questions? All right, I guess we would be looking for a vote to allocate ARPA funds for this pump station replacement.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion that we allocate an additional $350,000 from ARPA funds for the Warren Road pump station replacement project.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Chair, on the chair is a yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we're going to move back up to gifts and acceptances, gift acceptances. We have a $5 gift from Shaw's to the fire department.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
All those in favor? Aye. The chair is a yes. There is a gift to DPW from the Auburn Chamber of Commerce for $500 for the summer concert series.
I'm sure I'd make a motion to accept with gratitude in that, because we have two gift acceptances, but that two different departments with that one letter be prepared for your signature to express our gratitude to the chamber.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. The chair is a yes. Do we need to accept the DDIS one separately, or is that...
I would take that several, yes.
All right, so then... Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept the donation from the Auburn Chamber of Commerce for $1,000, also to be included in that letter, that single letter for Shaw's Inmetcal Waste Program, with gratitude and...
All those in favor? Aye. The chair is a yes as well. There are some minutes in your packet. Are there any corrections to the attachments? All right, we'll accept them as read, and I guess we just need a motion to adjourn.
So may.
All those in favor? Aye. The chair is a yes.